...approve?
No.
I'm seeing. No, okay. We have minutes to approve from Monday, July 9th.
I have one correction on that.
Okay.
On your old business, page two, down the bottom. Where I said that the assessors was looking for a similar person. It's the conservation.
Conservation, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th minutes as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We have meeting minutes from Tuesday, July 10th.
I'm making a motion to approve the July 10th, 2018 minutes.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay.
Now, do you want to be the A and R or you want to wait till later?
No, we'll do it now because the public meeting's not until 6:15.
So the A and R, this is the final form where we added the, what's on the stamp here?
Okay.
To the first two items. And then at the end, we reworded these two paragraphs. You have yours.
I'll take yours.
Right there.
Perfect. I imagine that's going to raise some questions, the first time someone reads it.
Well, because you're creating.
I know, I know.
There's no such thing as.
I know, but people say, well, if it's 125, then why would it be 50/50?
It's a matter of.
Yep.
And then that's the form that's been there. I just printed it up and actually made room for people to fill in the information.
Nice job. That's good. Jim has made a recommendation that we table this until after.
Sorry?
We're going to table this until after, okay?
Until after.
Or a later meeting or?
Later in the meeting.
Later in the meeting.
Later in the meeting, okay.
It's our A and R from Chickaby Street. We have that still? The A and R from Chickaby Street?
I believe we gave them that.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on here.
I don't see them here anywhere.
Yeah. One for George Cook, 65 South Street.
That's me.
That's you? Okay. You're going to come up?
My name is Ryan Geiser. I'm from Harold Leach Associates Land Surveyors in Happy. And I've got an A and R at 65 South Street.
Let's put it over there, it's probably easier.
Just walk us through.
Okay. We have an existing lot with a house on it, a couple of sheds. And so what we're creating, a new lot for the house and then two additional lots, one of which is an estate lot. Two frontage lots, an estate lot. An estate lot is 40 feet wide at minimum all the way back. It's got more than double the area required. If frontage lots have, we add the frontage and area required for the district. This little blurb right here is the new septic system for that house. Want to make sure that the board understood that it wasn't for either one of these lots. It goes for that house.
Square footage. Frontage. Okay, we're going to do the same thing in this one.
They didn't want to at this time. Was there a reason?
We're not showing septic or anything like that that they're supposed to be on the map?
What's that?
Aren't they supposed to be showing septic and all that sort of stuff on the map?
These are vacant lots.
Okay.
Are those two are vacant lots?
Right. And this here is the septic for? Existing.
Of the new leach field.
For this house. They had to redo it. So again, I wanted to make sure you understood that it was for that and not either one of those lots. So that there was no crossing the line.
Was the leach field like over here at one point or?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Again, we don't approve buildability.
No.
We just approve the separation of the lots.
It meets all the requirements.
I'm going to go to.
Tell me how much money I need to give you and I'll write you a check.
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay. Do that.
I don't think we need the stamp. It's here.
It's up there already.
Do you say we?
No, it's already printed on here.
No determination has been made. That's the buildability.
The show should not be construed either in those or in approval of zoning requirements. I mean, you can put it on if you want. It doesn't, it's not the same. Do you have the stamp?
stamp?
You can need the stamp.
What's today, the 21st?
Twenty-third.
We will, the milers.
Do we have another time, a breakaway time?
Yeah, there's a bunch of them over here.
I have, I have.
We don't need this one yet.
Make sure I get that back, okay?
I will.
Okay, do you have any?
Okay. Yes. We have a public meeting in Sowerfield for Kendall Street.
Keep on up at night.
Are you doing that stuff?
Yeah, always.
I can't start sending, who's, are you the supplier of all the pens tonight?
No, no. Just a couple.
I want to propose.
Thank God we're not.
We're closing as well.
Yep.
Closing open?
And the promotion will be closed, we're going to open the public hearing. We'll reconvene after the public hearing.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? What time is it?
6:18.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing notice. It's now 6:18 PM. Just going to read off the public hearing notice. The Grammy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 23rd, 2018 at 6:15 in the Old Library Top Floor Meeting Room. One Library Lane, Grammy Mass. Consider the application of Borrego Solar Systems Inc.'s 55 Technology Drive, Suite 102 Lowell Mass 01851 for a special permit and site plan approval as required under the following sections of the Grammy zoning bylaws. Section 3.0, Table 1, Schedule of Use and Regulations. Section 5.99, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations. Section 6.2, Special Permits. And 6.3, Site Plan Approval. The application proposed to install a 6.2 megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility on the approximately 30-acre portion of parcel land located at Zero Kendall Street, Assessor Parcel ID 8-B-5, owned by Breezy Acres LLC of 25 Pleasant Street, Grammy Mass, which is located within a residential, single-family zoning district. The complete application and plans are available for public inspection during regular business hours, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon on Fridays, at the Selectment Office located in Grammy Senior Center Building, 2nd floor, 10B West State Street, Grammy Mass. Anyone wishing information and/or be heard on this matter should appear at the time as place designated.
I want to make sure that everybody's signed in.
Okay, again, I know we made this announcement earlier, but anybody who is going to speak or wish to speak, please sign in up here on the corner. Perfect. And I do ask that, I will acknowledge you as far as speaking. If you have any questions, please do raise your hand and I will acknowledge you and you can present your question to the board or at that time we'll also entertain any questions to the applicant as well. Okay?
Good evening. For the record, my name's Dean. I'm a civil engineer with Borrego Solar Project. With me tonight is Matt Swansburg. He's the project developer. This is just a Google Earth aerial of the area, just to give you an orientation about the project's site. This is, it's a little hard to see probably from your perspective, but this is Kendall Street coming down through the center of this exhibit. This is Chickaby Street down here, 202 up at the top. And this is Taylor Street over on the far side. What we've done on this exhibit, this just shows the basic PV system layout. And these are just some dimensions to the adjacent residences that are down there. The closest is the one right here in the front. It's 172 feet from that residence to the modules themselves. These yellow spots are the equipment pad areas. Those are the equipment. They do produce some low levels of noise. So we've dimensioned that in the nearest residence in yellow. It's 562 feet from that to the nearest residence. If you're familiar with the area, the siting of the system is basically up on top of the ridge. Falls off very quickly to the east, down towards Kendall Street where the residences are in the front. This is a closer view of our proposed site plan. The pink line is the parent parcel that we're on. It is just under 60 acres, 57.5 to be exact. This red line with the boxes is our proposed fence line. We're proposing a six-foot chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire on the top. The blue lines represent the modules that we're going to be installing. Again, we're showing these equipment pad areas that are central to the project. These lighter colored areas are delineated weapons that are in and near the project. There is one small one that's in the central part of the site. The racking system that we use is a ground screw system. So we don't have to do excavation for foundations. There are just a large screw. It's about three, three and a quarter inches in diameter. It just screws right into the ground. It's very accommodating of different soil types. It can go through some types of rock. If there's bedrock or something that's really substantial, we might have to pre-drill, but we don't really need to do that in most cases.
Do they sit on cement blocks?
It is not. Those screws go six to eight feet in the ground. The structural design isn't complete at this point, so I'm not sure exactly how deep that will be. But that, there are four posts on each rack. And the rack is assembled on top of that. So that's normal ground disturbance in these areas where the modules are shown. We're also showing a 14-foot wide access driveway. It comes through the project of the turnaround at the south end. It's just a gravel driveway. We're only just going to get our boundary survey until go back this week. The plans that we submit are all based on GAS liar surfaces. So we don't have the exact location of the overhead lines that come through here. But our intent is to locate a driveway adjacent to those. We will have down the roadway in connection with the existing overhead lines in Kendall Street. We're proposing six new holes. Much of that is utility owned equipment that's required for the interconnection to the grade. The equipment areas will each have a single hole mounted light. This one hole, it's about eight feet tall. It's an LED ribbon fixture. It's shielded and it will be directed downward. It's also motion activated, so it's not illuminated at most times. Being a solar system, once the sun goes down, we're not producing any energy. So there's very few occasions that we'd need to be onsite after dark, but it is there for safety reasons if there is some injury complication that we would need to be onsite after dark. Once the system's in operation, it's completely unmanned. It's monitored its performance remotely. So generally, only two to three times a year will we come in for grass mowing and other maintenance type access. There's not really much occasion to be there. As far as the onsite weapon goes, at the closest point, we're proposing clearing up to 25 foot from the weapon resource itself, 50 feet in most cases around the side. There is a portion of the roadway that'll go through the outer portion of the 100-foot upper deck. We haven't made our application to the local plantation commission yet because we're waiting for the final topography so that we can do a final design on stormwater consideration. I would anticipate that we'll have some long, narrow water treatment facilities around the perimeter of the project. This would be at the top of the rise up here. So the remaining vegetation will be coming down the grade and our system will be sited up at the top of the hill. So it would be, there wouldn't be visibility from the Kendall Street side. That pretty much covers the basics of the layout. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members have or public. That's what we're here for, is to answer any questions that you might have.
You had mentioned that the closest resident to it is 170 feet?
Yes, it's this house that's kind of tucked back from Kendall Street, right here, that's adjacent to the extension of the property. And that's to the modules themselves, which don't make any noise or anything like that. The equipment area, it has a character that's in the 60 to 70 decibel range when you're standing directly adjacent to it, but it falls off pretty quickly. And once you're 175 feet or so away, it's gone back to ambient levels. And the residences would be much further from the equipment. The nearest one is 552 feet.
Now, the closest resident that's 170 feet away, what is the visibility from their yard to that?
Well, it also falls off in that direction. It would be less of an elevation change. So if it were necessary, there is space outside of our fence line to provide for some vegetative offering if it's required. I'll look at it again once we have the actual topography for the site to see what the site lines look like from that residence.
What type of disturbance would be done to the property itself as far as any leveling needed to be done?
The upper portion of the site is relatively flat until it starts to drop off sides. So we're not proposing a lot of grading internally. The racking system will accommodate quite a bit of change in topography. It can accommodate ups and downs in the topography. So really, the bulk of the excavation would be for construction of the roadway and at the equipment pads. There's very little required other than clearing and rubbing of the trees in the balance of the site area.
So with that happening up there, with that, you know, some of the recent storms we've had the past couple of months, would that affect the runoff?
Well.
It says a steep hill going.
Right. Being that this is forested up here and we're going to, we'll cede the entire disturbed area, but maybe grass mixes. So there is a slight increase in the runoff coefficient when you do that. I haven't done the final calculations because I'm just getting the topography. But what we'll do is we'll provide water management systems that will capture the runoff up at the top of the ridge and will control the runoff from there. We can use spread swales that will spread it out. It can come down the hill in a sheet flow fashion as it does now. We'll have to present full stormwater calculations that show that our post-construction runoff is equal to or less than the pre-construction runoff.
But you don't know that until you have supportive.
Right, right. So we still need to add that to the plans. And the conservation commissions are probably the more interested party in that. They'll review those calculations against the state title.
Access, the access road? How is that going to be built?
It is a 14-foot wide gravel road. So there's no asphalt pavement or anything like that. It's more of a larger gravel roadway. We don't really access the site much, so it's mostly there to stabilize in the event that emergency vehicles, like, would need to get up there, that type of thing.
Topography's going to be important for emergency vehicles, fire department, I see, left there.
There is a bit of a grain here. So once we have the final topography of the layout of the road paved area a little bit, just to accommodate the storm damage.
Any other questions from the board?
Speaking of the roadway, due to the topography or the steepness of the slope coming in off Kendall Street, how often do you propose to have somebody just doing a general check of the area to make sure that the gravel driveway, roadway hasn't? general check of the area to make sure that the gravel driveway roadway hasn't washed out or needs, needs some kind of attention?
Whenever somebody needs to be on site, they would inspect water management features, vegetation, the roadway itself for condition and deterioration that might have happened. So that would be two or three times a year in general.
I don't necessarily know that that's adequate.
If, uh-
But-
If the board desires something more frequently, we can revise our, our standard operation maintenance protocol to address that.
Right, and, and I think that's something that has to be worked out with the public safety end of it, police, fire.
Any other questions from the board?
I would open up the public right now for, for questions. I would ask that you wait for me to call on you and also just state your name and address so we know who you are and where you live before you resume the question, okay? I know the lady here at the back had a hand up before, so.
The, um, seventy-four Kendall Street. You think our house is the one that's closest on the property?
So you're directly adjacent to your, your-
It's not that. Yeah.
Sit back from Kendall.
Yeah, we got, got a little wet land this area, I think.
Okay, so that's, that's mine. Okay, so you're here.
Right.
Is that us?
This, this was the one that's directly adjacent to the weapon area?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd be tucked in this area? It's not the closest one. It is three hundred and forty feet away from the module.
What number is the closest one? Would it be fifty Kendall?
Um, I'm not sure of all the numbers. It's the other one that sits back Kendall Street, further north.
Is, is it possible to kind of turn it a little bit more or bring it back a little bit so?
I would say turn it like that, so you all can see.
So people can see it. Maybe you turn a little more towards them, the audience.
Should we save that for the town? If their tax remakes, is there-
Freedom of electricity?
Electricity, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll let the maps do that, we'll be close to the-
Yeah, sure. So I'm the project developer for the project. My name is Matt Swonberg. And typically after our first planning board hearing, we will approach the town assessor to discuss the payment and rule of taxes. And that's typical of most solar projects and municipalities and constituencies where we'll re, enter into an agreement to pay the town a fixed rate that's based on the nameplate size of the project or the term of the lease agreement. So there is tax revenue for the town.
Okay, so my anticipation is that our taxes would go down because our property values are going to go down because of this. So will you be making up for that?
I don't have any, anything to say to that.
We, we, that's, we can't speculate that property values will go down.
I think it's proven.
Uh, the studies that we have seen and have don't show any effect on property values for certain projects. There are studies that have been done locally. There are studies that have been done in other places around the US. And even in subdivisions, new subdivisions that are directly adjacent to solar development, the ones that have an exposure towards the solar sold for the same price as, as the ones that didn't own it. So there is actual documented evidence that it doesn't affect that.
Do you have any other questions?
Not yet.
All right, we're trying to work our way around the room, so bear with you, please.
Jim, old office seventy-seven Kendall on the other side of the street. Quite a bit of that water runs off that hill into my neighbor across the street's yard and crosses the street in, into my yard. So I would imagine if you're going to clear cut thirty acres, you're going to have to have quite a bit of water retention and treatment. I'm wondering about that. And I'm also wondering is once you cut that, is there going to be any spraying of chemicals up there like round up weed stuff? And if you're going to have transformers up there and whatnot, are there any like PCVs that are eventually going to be poisoning us all?
No, the, the answer is no to all of those questions.
No water retention?
There, no, there will be water retention around the grid at the site. There will be. A lot of this property falls off to the west.
Quite, quite a bit of it falls off to the east.
There's a very steep grade that I mentioned to the east. And we'll have water management calculations that show that we're discharging-
I would imagine it would have to be huge.
Uh, not necessarily because the site is generally open. The racks are elevated off the ground. The front edge of the rack is approximately thirty inches off the ground. So it's completely open under there. It will be native grasses that we only mow a couple of times a year. So they'll grow tall and they filter and slow down the runoff, just not as much as the forested area does.
So no spraying whatsoever?
We do not use any herbicides at any point in the construction.
Because I know they use herbicides on high tension liners that run out through the town. I've seen them, I've lived, I ran through evidence and I actually wiped out their water spray.
Right, we, we do not use herbicide on the site at all. And it's documented in our, oh, in our protocol. In this instance, there are some cases where there's what's called soiling of the modules where the surface gets dirty and the efficiency falls off. But we truck in clean water and wash with clean water. We don't use any cleaning agents or chemicals in that process either, so.
So the retention pond, like, how big do you think that would be? There's going to be, I would imagine there's going to be some sort of a retention pond.
Right, it'll probably be about two feet deep. It will be rather narrow just based on the John tree of the site and it'll be long.
And it'll all, that'll all dump out in one spot or?
Uh, no, we'll probably discharge in a number of places into a spreader swale.
Because, because me personally, not to cut you off, I'm on the other side of the street.
Sure.
And I'm twelve hundred feet into the woods. So it's not as much of a concern to me, but if I lived in any one of those houses on that side, I'd be real concerned.
Well, we haven't proved that we're not going to increase the runoff that comes down.
I can't see how you couldn't increase the runoff.
It's because it will be contained in those water management facilities. A large portion of it will pervert down because it's-
I get it, I just don't see how, I, I don't see how you can guarantee that.
It's, it's a standard engineering practice. It's, you know, it's going to be designed to those, the state's leaders for alcohol from the rest.
Yeah, I'll set this one.
Yep.
Just working my way around, so we'll start then with you.
I just want to figure back out what Jim said. So we live at seventy-six Kendall, Rebecca Barlow. And to this point, we have the, we depend on the runoff from the mountain in order to feed our wells. We have a shallow well, I don't know who else on our street has a shallow well, we may be the only one left. But we do, we depend on that runoff. So if you're going to not necessarily keep it from increasing, but potentially could decrease it, now we're talking about potentially an issue with our well drying out and not having water supply. So is there a way that you'll be monitoring that? I know you mentioned that we have to prove that we haven't increased it, but yet we can decrease.
The, the state guidelines don't necessarily drive us in that way. We want to be environmentally considerate of the neighbors and also the neighboring weaponed areas. So we would aim not to reduce the runoff by any significant factor because some of that runoff goes to, to nourish the adjacent weaponed areas as well. So we don't want to deprive them of their water budget either. So we'll, we'll be mindful of that and we don't have an excess of area to use for that. So we're not, we're not going to be decreasing the runoff from the site in large groups.
Yeah, I'll set with her.
Yeah.
Done with that, Mary Lou Shear.
My name is Phil Cross, I'm here in Kendall Street. Um, we're talking about retention pond up top will be like two feet deep.
Yes, probably.
And then the road to get up there will be lined up for emergency vehicles. And then you're growing the grass high enough to keep the sound of. Now what happens if that grass catches on fire? Where's the water going to come from to put out the fire there?
Well, I mean, that's, that's always an issue because our sites are isolated. But being that this is electrical equipment, water, water treatment by the fire department is the recommended means of extinguishing.
How will water stop it from coming out of my house?
Well, the, they would have to bring in Hummer trucks for that, so.
I'm, I'm on the fire department in Holyoke and we have a similar site they built right, right before the Mount Town power plant, which is ten acres. And they were allowed to do it because they had the Connecticut River right there so they could draft. And we're told not to go near it, just like you said, but we're going to protect the exposure and plenty of water there. You don't have enough water to protect the exposures.
Okay, well, we'll be working with the local fire chief so we can address those issues with him. It's not an unusual situation for us.
I'm sorry, it's not what?
It's not an unusual situation for, for our site. It's fairly typical. We have around the US, we, our operation and maintenance department manages several thousand sites. And in all of those sites, I think there were only two. One was for, and one for fire at an equipment area. There are, there was only damage very localized to the equipment. I, I didn't start a fire in, in the surrounding grass areas. So we don't have a lot of experience with that kind of a problem on these sites. There's very little equipment or other reasons that would start fire on the site. It's very unusual occurrence.
And I'll set?
Thank you.
We'll go back.
I'm Kevin Smith of ninety Kendall Street. I live on that hill. And as it is right now with the water runoff and everything, I do have some concerns and issues. And if your system fails and we get more runoff and it does damage to my home, who's responsible for that?
Well, um, I, I don't know that I know of any instances where these systems fail. It's just a depression in the earth.
Yeah, but if it's undermined, I live on a hill, so it washes down.
If, if there were erosion, but we're controlling the outfall from there, discharge pipes will be small. They'll flow into a spreader swale that catches the wire, spreads it out so that it just comes gently over a berm on the downhill side. So it will spread it out to be more a sheet flow. It won't discharge at any point that it has erosion forces. That's another thing that we have to prove with our water management calculation, not having point sources of outfall or high velocities coming off of our site that would create erosion conditions like that.
Well, underneath doesn't do that either, but when it pours, water's got to go down. So if you have a two-foot trench and that fills over, it's covered down the hill.
Right, but it would be spread overall very large.
So it's not just me, that's all my neighbors.
The way that it comes down the side now, very, it would be very similar.
Yeah, is that clear?
James, code fifty-two Kendall Street. I believe I'm right near that entrance way that you're going to be building. But my question today is, has the environmental gone up there and looked at for the endangered species? Because I do not live here all my life and I know there's a few up there. One being the pink and white lady slippers which are endangered. Those need to be checked out because I got a problem when I, well, I was a kid, so I know they're up there. There's a couple of other things that are up there. There's vermin pools that you only can check for in the spring. Has any of that been checked yet?
We've had environmental consultants go out and flag the weaponed areas.
Okay, this is in a weaponed area. Vermin pools really sometimes only show in the spring? Do you have to check them in the spring?
They're very well qualified to see if there's an area that could potentially be a vermin pool.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing that's mapped in this area. A lot of those are mapped on the state GIS system.
I know where two is. I says that I've lived around my life. And I know where two is and I can bring an expert in to show you where those two are. But I wanted to know, when was the time that you had this inspected? When was it done?
I believe it was the spring according to Matt. I have the paperwork received exactly when the law decided.
Okay, because that's, and I guess it's that I can bring an expert in. There is a few up there and it's all our salamanders and all of that stuff is up there, so.
That would really be more an issue for the conservation commission? Would be a lot for the, for the notice of impact up there.
Okay. Now you're saying there's no, only the soldiers going up top, so the entrance way going up is where the power lines are now?
That's what we're-
Okay, so you're not cutting all those trees down, you're only going to go up where the street is?
That's what we're proposing right now is to come through that same cleared area.
So all those trees on either side of that road will stay up?
We're hoping unless there's some restriction, uh, reason wise because of the existing overhead, uh, power line. I did look at the underlying easement documents for that, that overhead line. And it doesn't look to be as restrictive as a transmission right away or something like that that we would have, have really restricted access to. So we're hoping to just come up with, uh, directly adjacent to the overhead lines and clear area that's there.
Okay, because if, you know, I know the power lines come down and you're going to go across Kendall Street and keep going down with the power, or the old power lines used to be, or where do you, where's your stuff? Where's, where are you connecting to?
We're connecting to an existing power pole that's right across the street.
From, I know that Kendall Street.
Yeah, the utility will do an impact study that will outline whatever, whatever improvements are required to back on the distribution system when we do connect later on. So they'll, they'll do studies to see what the effects of the PV system are on the local system. And we'll have to pay for those upgrades.
So you're actually connecting to the line that's already on Kendall Street?
Yes.
So the one that blows up all the time and I lose my powder? I see sparks all the time coming out of that box.
Well, there'll be improvements to it from there to the substation.
Because we have fireworks all the way around the nightclubs. But I'm just concerned that you guys check those two areas for the vermin pools, because there is two of them up there and they are very important to our pipeline.
Well, that's definitely something we pass along to conservation to look at.
And your lady slippers, was it any, not that?
Jones has her in for a while.
You're done, Janice? Sir, back there?
Uh, Ken Wright and Dennis Wright, forty-four Kendall Street, we're the other side of Janice of those trees. We also grew up in the area of our old house. And I have numerous concerns. First, I want to say that I don't think you're adequately answering a lot of questions because you just keep saying that you haven't experienced it or you don't have a lot of answers for what our concerns are. And we don't want to be the test subjects here. We don't want this to happen to us because you put this here. We don't want fires to develop. We've never had these problems. There are stone walls up on that hill that are conserve, some walls from like sixteen hundreds maybe? They're not supposed to be touched. So I don't know what your plan is for those, but they're not supposed to be moved or relocated or-
There's actually a foundation up in there for the whole house. There's actually, there was a road up in there all the time.
Yeah, those are mostly outside of our site development. There is a smaller, those are all sort of access.
In addition, I also have a concern about the value of our house. I know my first preference, if I'm going to go buy a house, I'm not going to buy a house next to a solar. And I'm sure that a lot of people here would feel the same way.
You're right.
And, uh, my concern is also the view from my house. I do not want to look out my window and see solar panels. I watch trees. I've grown up with trees there my whole life and I don't want them to go away. I'm also concerned about the landslide. There's a lot of soft sand there. I already see this, my backyard's like, when you have more weight up there and clear cut it, you're getting rid of a lot of the trees that are picking up the water. And that's a big concern. I also have a shallow well.
Yeah, we're probably one of the only houses left that does. Forty-four has a shallow well down near the road, it's been there since the fifties.
Our well is right at the bottom of the, the hill from your road, your exit. All the water comes there. And as a matter of fact, since the town repaved our road, we've had constant problems with water drainage because they, it pools up at the bottom of our driveway and in the winter it ices over. We can't even, we have trouble even washing our mailbox because it's just a sheet of ice. And I don't feel as adequate drainage. I'm concerned about contamination of our river.
What happens with those if something does happen to our river? Who's going to be responsible?
Exactly. We're going to, we're going to replace our well because-
Because we shouldn't have to be responsible to spend that kind of money. Because we should have to be responsible to spend that kind of money to drill a new well because of something that's put in beyond our control.
We have material data sheets that we presented to for, cut sheets for the equipment that's being proposed here. There's been a lot of testing as far as these modules, when they've been run over. So that they're, you know, they're distorted, their glass on the surfaces crack. There are leaching tests that show that there aren't any hazardous materials that leach out of them even in that condition. These are totally contained modules that are out there. If anything's damaged on them, they get replaced very quickly because we're monitoring the production of the system all the time. So they'll come out and replace those very quickly.
I'm not worried about your equipment speaking. I'm worried about, as he pointed out, any chemicals that might be used for controlling any grass or anything like that.
No, use of resides.
And also, as you mentioned, we do rely on water runoff for our well as it's shallow. And I want to be guaranteed that if our well does become contaminated, it's gonna get replaced and not damage.
It can cause damage while you're doing the installation and adding a road in. What happens if our well becomes collapsed or something? It's not a point five well, it's an actual shallow well with an access. It's probably the only one left on.
We're not gonna be significantly changing the drainage patterns in the area. We're going to do a lot of.
I didn't say drainage. I didn't say drainage. I said our well collapses because of your equipment. What happens then? We just want some sort.
Property, I don't even know how that.
Can I finish, please? We'd like some sort of guarantees that if something does happen, then we're covered. It's not unreasonable to collapse.
That's gonna have to be taken upon for another.
Well, I have to happen before you start building. It's a full.
Folks, let's remember too, it's just kind of a question and answer type thing.
What? Have we got an article to answer?
Well, he's trying to, I believe he's trying to give you the best answer.
It's always an answer to a point. It's a tail, it's a tail return itself. And I personally don't want it.
George, three minutes, it's okay. I understand that, but I understand where you're coming from. But as I said, he's trying to answer questions that are being asked of him to the best of his knowledge and ability.
Okay.
If there's further questions and it's the beginning of the process, then those are things we can address down the road.
Also, in addition, I have a concern about snakes. There's a lot of copperheads up behind our house. Where are they gonna go? If you clear cut that, take out rocks, things like that. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna end up on our basins. And that's a big concern for me. Because I know they're there. I've seen. There's a lot of them. And I'm also concerned about my taxes if they put this in and if the value of my house goes down. I want my taxes lowered. In addition to that, if the town is gonna get any kind of revenue off of this whole project, is that gonna help my electricity rates? I mean, why should it all benefit the towns and we're the ones that have to put up with it next to us and suffer looking at solar panels?
Well, that's up to further discussion down the road.
I can understand that.
That's outside our.
Raising the bar.
That's outside. I agree, it's a lot of, it's just outside our boards per gift.
I just, my opinion is if you're gonna start to commercialize Granby, we don't need to, we need to preserve the history of our town. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to them because I'm all for solar energy, I'm all for renewable energy. But not as expensive people that own the homes, that own the homes here for a long time. All the other.
George?
George, that's ninety-five Kendall Street. And we pay a lot of taxes on that street. I pay over ten thousand dollars a year. He's telling us the value aren't going down. How can you say that? Bring a realtor in here and have them say it. Because I would not pay the money for the houses on our street. Definitely, if that's all you can see is electric.
We can provide the studies that we have.
In Granby?
Not specifically.
You're not even from the state. You get done doing it, you're gone. You're from the state, but you're from the east coast. So you get done, you leave, you leave us with this crap.
Our own division still.
All right. You're gonna come in, I'd like to see one of them put it in their neighborhood again. Why don't you go to the oil board? There's all kinds of black shit down. You got all kinds of space over there. Why don't make a rule? There are rules. We pay more taxes, we pay a lot of taxes.
I'm not gonna get into arguing with them.
I'm not getting into argument. We pay a lot of taxes to live in a rural country area.
I understand that. Our bylaws allow them to, allows the town.
We're a special permit. So we're here to stop you from giving a special permit.
Well, that's why we're having a public hearing at this point. That's the whole process right now. Sir, another?
Bobbers, one oh seven Kendall. Could you outline the procedure that's necessary to get approved for this? I know there were four steps that were mentioned, but we're all being in this process.
We're at the very beginning of that process. We made application for a special permit and cycle, first cycle interview to the town. This is our first public hearing on the issue. They're reviewing the plans concurrently. We haven't gotten any comments back, but we'll get comments on the plans. We'll respond to those. We'll respond to hopefully all the concerns that are raised here by the public. We'll revise our plans accordingly and we'll resubmit and the process will go on. This is just the first step in the whole thing.
Sir?
Jessica, seventy Kendall Street.
Yes.
Delivering that. One question is, are these panels going to be visible from Kendall Street, on the street?
Our first, our first blush at that is no, because they'll be up beyond the top of the ridge. We'll do some cross-sections through there once we have the topography to show the sightlines from the Kendall Street side. So we'll provide more information on that at the next step, how we have all the information that we need to generate that. So the grade comes up at a pretty steep grade from Kendall and our system is only about eight half feet tall at the tallest point. It will be set back from the top of slope, so there shouldn't be any visibility from Kendall Street.
Well, what if there isn't visibility?
The existing vegetation between the residences and where our site is. They're in the back of these lots and this darker green area here will all remain.
From my backyard, from my backyard, seventy Kendall Street, seventy-two Kendall Street, et cetera, et cetera. Are these panels going to be visible?
They should not be. They should not be.
Excuse me. Joe Arby, eighty-eight Kendall. I said correct.
Please.
In the wintertime, those panels will be visible.
Let me, let me just keep on going on the door, okay?
Yes, sir.
You've been doing good so far. Keep it going, Adam.
So, yes, we're, I mean, we're assuming that this is a mixed forest. There's a lot of pine and something with the deciduous trees. But if it is all deciduous and it loses foliage in wintertime, we can buffer along the edge so that there's no visibility.
There's a high amount of.
Here goes again. And again, folks, we just asked that you call that thing fair to everybody.
I thought I just addressed you one correctly, so that's fine.
Our meeting here.
Thank you.
Are y'all done, sir? Okay. You have other questions?
Probably wasn't done yet. The other question is, thirty acres of trees are gonna be cut down, is that right?
Uh, just about that.
Now, these thirty acres of trees absorb wood, a lot of water right now. And often we see the runoff come across Kendall Street and crossing and running down through some residential areas and down into the woods where people have, maybe have plans to do something with their land. So with compensation or value, are they gonna get from more water running into their land?
We'll, through this process, we're gonna have to prove that we're not putting more water onto those residents. So we'll have facilities that capture that and discharge it at a controlled rate so that we're very close to the existing condition now. That will be our aim is to replicate what's coming off the site now as best we can. So we don't want to increase it. We also don't want to decrease it significantly. So, because obviously some of the neighbors have shallow wells, wells that water supply reduced. So we'll try to be as close to existing conditions as we can with our system.
What kind of system?
It will be detention areas. So there'll be depressions that are rock mine. And then we'll have a firm that overflows. They'll have some small pipes spaced out along there that will discharge and bleed that down. But it'll be a retention area that's depressed into the ground. It'll catch that water and retain it up there for a period of time so that it has a chance to percolate into the ground. And that if it rises to a certain level, it will flow out of those small outfall pipes. What we'll have is another swale on the discharge side of that so that it collects the water again before it comes down the hillside, spreads it out. It'll come over a little firm so that it's flowing out over a long distance rather than half long, so that it's a road. So it slows it down, spreads it out so that it's moving slowly, more like a.
All water runs downhill, the outs move down?
Yeah, it'll run downhill into those storage areas and be stopped for a period of time before it continues to run down.
Thank you, Brian. Joe Arby, eighty-eight Kendall. I have a swale in my backyard and I also have a French curtain hanging around my foundation. Early in the spring, when the ground was still frozen, the water came right downhill off the ledge, which is in my backyard, probably in Kendall's too, and it went into my cell. You say you're gonna remove the hill, thirty-plus acres of trees. That's quite the buffer that stops a whole lot of water from coming down the hill on my house. My house also runs down my driveway into my neighbor's yard across the street. You're gonna need bigger than two-foot retention above that. And in the winter, when it's frozen, your runoffs and your pipes aren't gonna be enough. They're not gonna be enough. And it's, you need more engineering.
If I could just interrupt here for a minute?
Sure.
The planning board's here to protect the citizens of Granby. The town voted to approve these solar fields by right. We typically, the process that we go through will be, we will have our hearing like we're having tonight. It gets vetted. It gets vetted through police, fire, DPW. Conservation will be involved in this. And more than likely, the town, this board is gonna ask to have a peer review for engineering, for stormwater management. So it's not like they're gonna engineer something and we're gonna rubber stamp it. More than likely, this board's gonna call for a peer review. They have all the calculations, the water calculations. They may have to go out on site. They may have to tweak their design in certain areas. They may have to eliminate some of the panels. We may not allow all those panels to be installed. The road, the access road, there's a lot of things that, we've approved of quite a few of these in town unfortunately. But there's, it's not a rubber stamp. I just wanna assure everybody here that the board's gonna take a serious look at it. Peer review will be done. Other department heads will take a look at it with comments. And then if in fact we go to, we do approve it, more than likely will be with conditions. That will address hopefully all your concerns.
Thank you, Jim.
I have another concern. As it brings the third acres in breath, that area is traversed by deer, hare, moose, turkeys, coyotes, foxes, skunks, turtles. When you put up your fence, your channeling fence there, you've cut them off from the water source that you've encapsulated inside your solar field.
Is one water source in the area? We do raise, no, we do raise the fence six inches off the ground so that small creatures can still come in and through the site. Larger creatures like deer or moose, that's a different subject. If there's a concern when the conservation commission looks at it, we can fence that area out. It might be a consideration. It's really an issue for the conservation commission when we make our application. They review all endangered species issues. They'll look at water management. They'll look at all of those environmental concerns when they review the permit.
Is the border delineated there now as we speak?
Of the wetland?
No, of your solar field.
It is not marked in the field right now. It is up at the top of the grade on the flatter portion of the property. It's west of where the ground really starts to slope off to the east. And it's mostly blatter up here on the top of all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to, I got a couple of things and to add to Chip's point, not only do those trees suck up a lot of water, they also suck up carbon, but that's besides the point. I'm sure you've done thirty-acre solar farms before, so you must have some sort of numbers that you can give us what kind of benefit to the town that's gonna be, A. And B, what's the turnaround time for this solar field? How long is it gonna take you to build it?
Let me try and address those in order. What was the, the first question was?
First question was, because somebody had asked before what the benefit to the town was and you didn't have a good answer, but I'm sure you've done thirty-acre solar farms before.
Well, it's because it hasn't been negotiated.
It hasn't happened yet.
Right, we.
But it's been negotiated in other places.
We rely on the town assessor to model the project and provide us guidance on what that tax liability is. And so we haven't had that conversation in Granby.
Okay, I'm speaking in general terms. Let's take a thirty-acre solar field that you've done elsewhere and what was the benefit to those towns?
It's a very large spectrum. It could be anywhere from.
Give me a ballpark.
It could be anywhere from seventy thousand dollars a year to two hundred thousand dollars a year. It depends on the size of the project, the town, and how the town assessor.
So seventy to a hundred thousand, so in my opinion, that's not a lot. That's not a lot of benefit. Not, doesn't sound like a lot of benefit to me.
So we're gonna rely on the town assessor to provide their professional opinion of what the tax.
I would think if it was under two hundred thousand, that's not a very good deal to me.
That's something the town should, the town will address.
I understand. And what do you think the turnaround time building this?
For the construction.
How long are these folks gonna listen to change laws up here?
Well, the heavier part of the construction was a very short period at the beginning. It's probably six to eight weeks. It's not very long. They're putting the ground screws in, assembling the rafting, roughing in the roadway. There won't be a lot of heavy equipment on site after the first few weeks. Beyond that, it's mostly individual laborers and electricians that are on site. Mounting the modules, wiring the equipment, building the equipment that here is and things like that. The entire construction timeframe is probably eight or nine months completely. But the noise may be heavier part of the construction. There's clearing equipment and things like that on site are a very short period at the beginning.
Well, if that's, if that's typical, I mean, give me a ballpark, hundred thousand, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand. I would say two hundred fifty thousand, let's go even higher. Let's say four hundred thousand to the town here.
That's not up to us.
It's not a very good deal.
It's not.
I'm just saying.
And it may very well be in that range. It's gonna be up to your town board to negotiate.
I get it. I'm just, I'm just saying, I hope they take that into consideration when they, when they go to approve this project. If that's the dollar amount, two hundred thousand, let the deer roam free, 'cause that's nothing.
And as Jim spoke to earlier too, one of our biggest concerns is the town and the residents of the town as well. So this is the beginning point and we do take. So this is the beginning point, and we do take everything into consideration. That's something you're talking about. That's something that's another part of the town that would, you know, go through that.
The town, the town should also consider and talk to conservation about it. Rather than clear-cut thirty acres, use some of the open space that they already have.
Well, again, this is, this is, this is the first beginning of the process.
I get it, I just hope you guys think long and hard.
There's a long...
I'm not gonna be able to see it from my house, so I really don't care.
There's a long road to go down, and again, this isn't, this isn't the first project in town that the board talks about. Again, all the comments that are being brought up here, we take very seriously.
I would just, I would just ask you to consider this very, very hard.
We definitely will, and again, we look at, you know, any stipulations or, you know, how it acts, everything. It's a wide variety of things. I'm gonna work my way around the room again, I'll see, so, maybe I haven't spoken yet, so...
Michelle, I'm 166 Kendall, I'm up the other end. My question is, is what benefit is this to the town electricity-wise? Does any, you know, I know it's, I'm off with the conservation of the animals, but is there a benefit to the townspeople electricity-wise? Can we, do people have the option to buy into it, or is it, what is it? Or is it for someplace far away?
So I can talk to that quickly. The projects that are developed in the National Grid surface territory, or the project, this one in particular that we're developing here, is going to feed the grid, the electricity. So the hundred percent of the solar generation will flow back into the National Grid surface territory. This particular project is also going to be qualified as community shared solar. So that gives residents within the National Grid surface territory an opportunity to purchase credits from the system to reduce utility losses. And in areas where that is available, it's usually ten, ten to twelve percent discount on the electric rate. It varies from place to place depending on what service area it's in. But it would be a discount in that range.
Well, there's a lot of people who don't wanna put the panels on their roofs. So I know this is an option, and I work at the University of Mass where they put the solar panels above parking lots, so that they actually shade parking lots and they give people that work here the benefits of having a covered parking lot. I mean, is that an option as opposed to putting it in the middle of the woods?
I mean, we, we do do parkour projects as well. We're looking for sites all over the state and various places across the US. Where it's available, we do develop parkour locations, we do rooftops, we do what would be more of a brown site development, all of those.
Trying to stick to...
And just to address another point that the gentleman over here brought up. I know that it's not necessarily an desirable outcome for citizens to see large areas of trees cleared away. But when you look at it on the basis of the carbon footprint, the carbon footprint that this solar energy replaces in a coal-fired plant or, you know, controlling product, production of energy, is multiple times the carbon footprint that's reduced by the forested area. So even though it doesn't seem that way, it does offset that forested area.
James?
Just one quick follow-up. You said it was already surveyed, I didn't get the name of the company that did the survey in the spring. Do you have it?
SWCA is what I'm doing initially.
It's SWCA?
SWCA, yes.
Okay, thank you.
They used to, their local office here used to be doing environmental, but they were purchased by SWCA, they're an international company.
Sir?
So what's Breezy Acres getting out of this, because they're...
We are leasing the land to Breezy Acres.
That's all you're gonna say?
I mean, that's not really part of our, it's not part of our scope here in this, in this meeting, so be sure of that.
I just have one other issue with what the board's comments were. He stated that you've already given approval, so this is gonna happen.
I never said that. I never said we gave approval.
Yes, you did, that was the first thing you said. You said, "We've already given approval to this project." And you have many others in town, all right? So you have already said that this will happen, and you're just gonna figure out how to make it happen. But then you said that you're gonna address all of our concerns. Why did our concerns not come up before you gave the approval? I know you said you wouldn't, it wasn't a rubber stamp, your words were, you gave approval.
Sir, all right, for one thing, it's the board's approval, not one person on the board's approval. I know Mr. Tronky talked about other solar fields that are in town. One at East Street that this board sat on, and it was part of that too. And again, we will, we will address all the concerns that citizens bring up. And we'll try to do our best working with them in regards to the concerns. But there's no, no one said anything, it's a process that we're going through. This is the beginning of the process.
I understand that, but it's worse when you gave approval, it's just not rubber stamped. So you're just saying that it's gonna happen, you just have the hooch to jump.
Somebody did speak to, excuse me, and by right, they have, by special permit, they can put that in our town.
But that's...
Our bylaws, excuse me, can I finish, please? All right, our bylaws allow that. Okay, so again, we're just taking the beginning piece here, all right? And we wanna listen to everybody's concerns, and definitely wanna give everybody the opportunity to voice their concerns and how it impacts them personally, or how they feel it impacts the town.
So in essence, you're saying the approval was given in the perceived, the process, but the approval hasn't been given for the actual site?
Excuse me?
In other words, the whole process that you have to go through for them to build, you've given approval to start the process, but you haven't given approval for them to actually build the farm?
This is the process that we're going through. This part right here with the, the public hearing for the planning board, this is part of the process. Conservation may also have a public hearing, to listen to people's concerns as far as that too. Again, it's the beginning of the process of...
So then what do you mean by saying that he, that there was already approval given by the board? Exactly, please clarify, because I think you need to choose your words carefully.
I don't need to choose my words carefully.
I think you do. Because there's a lot of clarification you need to...
Sir, with all due respect, I've been very respectful to you and everybody in here. What I'm saying is that the board makes a decision. The board will vote on what happens here. Okay, it's not one, one person, not one person has a say as to what the board does. We're all equal parts of that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify. He stated that it's already given approval.
Mr. Chair, please.
Okay, I can't go back to what he said, I don't know exactly what he said, so I'm not...
What's your take?
I think I can clear up what is being misconstrued. I believe Mr. Tronky said that the town of Granby voted to approve the installation of solar farms by right. That was a vote. We are now in the fledgling state of this particular project to gather information from the developer, from you folks. It will also be sent off to other boards and committees for their evaluation input. And the developer also has to seek their approval, such as conservation commission, that kind of stuff. There will be, I have to imagine, there's gonna be public hearings at the conservation commission level. The assessors level, I don't know if there's a public hearing for that. It's probably just gonna be a line item on an agenda, on one of their meeting agendas. But the approval, nothing has been approved for Breezy Acres LLC, yet.
Okay, well, that was a misunderstanding or misspoken, but that's not the way I took it from what he said.
I understand.
And I appreciate your clarification, I really do, because I can understand if it was voted on that, okay, we can install that one, but that's not the way I took his words.
If my neighbor wanted to install one in my backyard, that person has the legal right here in town, due to our town bylaws, to start the process, just as what's happening here today.
No, I don't have a problem starting the process, it was just the way I heard him was not the way... What you said is not the way I understood his words.
I, I believe I...
I do clarify.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Philip Kraus, Kendall Street. Can I just follow up your last statement? So your neighbor has the right to build a solar in your backyard? Is it zone residential, he still can?
Yes, yes, that is what the town of Granby, that is what the town of Granby voted on to accept.
So why, why do we need this hearing today?
Because part of the conditions of allowing these solar fields is that they need site plan approval by the planning board and special permit approval by the planning board. So that the town as an entity can hopefully make sure that everything is done correctly and everybody is heard. They can't just come in and start construction. There's a preview and a reviewing process.
So even on a commercial level like these guys are doing, they have the right to re- re-vote?
In residential areas? Yep, yes.
Miss Seven?
Yes.
Mr. Vice?
We come over this way, some of these guys are asking two questions right ahead.
I'll have my way over, I know.
Would you recognize me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jay Jones, I live at eighteen Kendall Street, I'm here in Granby. First of all, I've got to say to Alex on camera, I am not here as the selected tonight, I am not here as the chairman of the energy committee, and I am not here as the chairman of the economic program. I'm here as a resident and a resident homeowner. Before I ask my questions, I just want to put one stipulation. These gentlemen are correct, but there's one little exception I have to put in. You can put a solar field anywhere you want in Granby as long as it doesn't exceed two hundred and fifty KW. That's a right. Once you go over two hundred and fifty KW, you get a special permit, come to these gentlemen. So two hundred and fifty KW and below, by right, you don't need permission that bylaws say. You go above it, these gentlemen and everybody else get involved. That's why they're here tonight, with this solar field over two hundred and fifty KW. Okay, now to my question. The land of Kendall Street, what kind of classification is the land? Is it open land, is it agricultural land, how is it classified?
Um, everyone has that information right there.
Okay, then my next question. The town of Granby looked to install a fifteen-acre solar farm on municipal property. That would net in the town approximately a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years, and then will be decommissioned back to its natural status. That if it's on municipal property. If this is going on private land, which it is, there is gonna be minimal, and I repeat, minimal revenue to anybody in the town here because of the way they calculate the size of the project. So from a revenue standpoint, for the Granby taxpayers, this is not a good deal. If this farm is not being started on municipal property, only one that's really benefiting is the minimal, again, yet.
Jay, Jay, in all fairness, again, that's outside the scope of this meeting, but also as well, that's something that it's gonna happen with the town assessors and go from there. So we can't speak for that, the amount, right, because we don't know at this point.
Outside the scope of the market, but I mean, oh, he had a very good point. Yeah, I think that's the end of it, we need enough.
But again, that is something that can't be, we don't know what that amount's gonna be. That's something that's gonna be decided down the road, just like other previous solar farms that have been, that have been put in place in town.
Well, just to be finished, but, yeah. The town of Granby was denied an application for a fifteen-acre solar farm that was four megawatts because National Grid told us the power lines and the substations could not take. So Granby could not have a municipal solar field. Now these gentlemen are coming in for six megawatts. I don't know how the town can be denied a four-megawatt, and somebody else...
Jay, my understanding on that was that National Grid, that the system needed to be upgraded. Okay, and National Grid wasn't gonna spend the money to upgrade it. The town was not gonna spend that money to upgrade it. I can't speak for them, but I'm assuming they're paying the money from National Grid to upgrade the system. Although that's be true, but that's, at this point, that's what I'm assuming, so...
That, that's correct. The utility, excuse me, does an impact study. They outline all of the upgrades that are required between our point of connection and the substation that, that the energy's gonna be distributed to. They will estimate the cost of those improvements. We will pay fees for that upfront before the utility comes in and constructs those improvements. So that'll all be paid for upfront. That construction will go on once, once our construction is approved, then their construction for this distribution system will be concurrent with ours. It usually lags a little bit behind. We can't, we don't get permission to upgrade our system or to interconnect it to the system until those upgrades are all complete.
John?
Oh, hey, I forgot one of the masks, I was...
I can come back to you if you want.
I'm gonna need our shoulder. Hey, you're saying you're funding thirty acres up there?
Approximately.
It was a ninety-five ton, I have a John Saxon. It seems every time it rains, I run off from, Mr. Everich, oh, come on, don't put me in danger. I'm just saying, your area and a couple houses next to that. Now, you start cutting down thirty acres, where's, and you're saying you put these two-foot retention and go for the water, and you put a little swale. What happens if it rains like it's been doing the last few days, and the retention fills, and here comes a holy hell down the hill, because there's no, no trees that suck up all the water or whatever. Now, what's the water table up here?
I, I don't know right now. I'll have that information, and it'll be part of the stormwater analysis.
You know, you put that intention, you know, two feet deep, or who knows, like three feet below that.
It should be...
And you're thinking all this.
But just to address your other...
Same questions.
There are state guidelines for...
I know, I...
It's gonna be analyzed up to a hundred-year return on install. So a very large storm that has to be modeled for that system, and you have to prove that when I'm going to...
Close, I just answered the game of conversations, so minimum talking in between us.
Because, you know, like, like I'm saying, if it comes down thirty acres of trees and it's been rushing through the house, and that water's, and it does go like that, it's gonna be a waterfall.
Right, and I, I understand your concern. It's not, it's not such a significant difference as if we were taking down trees and creating like parking area or some other kind of use or something like that. It's still going to be largely an open meadow, so there's still a lot of open ground surface that where the, the water is percolating.
Pretty good, and they're on, and that water table says two people over that.
It'll, it'll be part of that analysis. We'll have to show what, what the people's water table...
I have no water in my house, and I haven't more come down the hill. My water table's only like ten people over.
I think that's what they've been talking about, they've been, you know, they have to by, make sure they're not running more or running less, let's try to contribute to the same amount.
If I, may I ask a question? Part of the stormwater analysis, would that be a hydrogeologic study as well?
There's consideration of the soil types, the ground cover, so going from unforested conditions to just open grass area. There are runoff coefficient systems for all of those in different ranges of soil types. So there's a whole range of hydrologic conditions that are modeling that from A to B. A being a soil that percolates into the ground, or readily it's very paltry down to T, which is a four-inch range of soil. So that's all, that's all incorporated into those...
Into the stormwater management, okay, thank you.
Nobody's discussed, I heard you say when I first came in, I had a little slow. Decibel, you said it was at fifty, what?
It's between sixty and seventy.
Oh, no, sixty, seventy.
Is that a guy?
Sixty, seventy?
It's during the daytime when the inverters are running. It would be a fairly consistent low hum, about sixty decibels. Once the sun goes down, that almost stops.
It goes down, it's silent.
It's dead silent after, after sundown.
You know, because I can hear it, it's... You know, because I can hear it, it's, the sound goes right, I can hear how far up the hill. Now, 65, 70 decibels. I'm going to be outside, I'm going to be hearing this?
He did, but he did say that the closest is 562 feet from that and you really can't hear that, you can't hear it at that point.
Although the truck sound goes travel, especially down the valley over there.
They're doing the study.
The board has a major concern.
Something to address.
The board starts with noise insurances. We have the levels and project the most construction point level, if that's something that the board's like.
Now, where is the road going, are they going down the corner? There's two roads or one road?
There's just one, just one with a turn around. Yes.
Not because you want to go out to shake my whole.
No, just where the, that clear area is or the distinct.
Where, where?
Again, folks, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that, that we don't have side conversations because it makes it hard for other people to hear what's being said. Thank you. Eric, any other question in the back there?
Eric Weasel, 50, Emerald Street. I think I'm your lucky, here's the butter here. So I have two questions. If it's determined in the wintertime that it's an inadequate barrier, what are our rights to counteract the drugs?
Well, we'll try and address those through the process. So if it's determined that there's a need for screening, we'll, we'll provide screening either a solid fence or evergreen trees along, along the edge of the property that will provide visual screening. Those will also prevent the sound from the site as well. So there, there are a number of things that we use to screen.
What is the narrowest amount of foliage that is fair? What is your system?
I haven't measured it. I would have to look probably on the aerial. I can, I can bring that information with me next time. But there's, I mean, there's existing vegetation in the back of these lots, so it's probably going to be close to 300 feet just based on these.
Yeah, we're not there.
We're away there.
We're here, we're here, yeah. Yeah, the shed is behind your house. If this is your house, there is an open area behind your house, so there wouldn't be a lot there. That would be an appropriate area for us to provide visual screening for you. And I don't know how much elevation difference there is there. The elevation difference up here provides a lot of visual screening, but I think that this is not as much of a rise up to that section, so it would definitely be an area where we'd want to screen visually.
Another issue is going to be, I've tried to maintain the private driveway at less of a grade than you're going to have for 11 years, and I can't do it. If you guys are coming two, three times a year, your road's going to be a little chemistry.
Well, in the secret section of that provides our soil that catches the runoff that's coming down the hillside, it'll be a rock mine squail that tears that down for the babies. Keeps it away, keeps it away from the roadway.
And base stones.
I mean, we have various deep driveways in some places around the state. I'd be able to bring in some photos of what those roadways look like after they've been in and in operation, so I would be able to do that.
You have a set? Sir?
I have a question about vision technology. I don't really know a lot about solar. You were talking about how the units themselves makes physical noise. What about electrical noise as far as, do they affect signals? There's people that use broadcast TV instead of cable or most of radios or things like that, or what type of, is there electrical noise that's backfitted in the system because you're using the existing system?
They're very low.
Very low?
And it's mostly direct proximity to the equipment. The electromagnetic fields that are involved with this are probably similar to sitting in your living room and watching the television. So they're, they're very low levels. They're well below any threshold guideline that are established anywhere. And it's all very low level to the equipment itself.
Oh, really? Quality of our levels will be higher.
That equipment and the perimeter of our project is not much of an, and what we require that it can be done.
Have, have, you said it does give to the, exist like vines that are everywhere there?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't have any effect on that as far as introducing any type of...
Well, only, only the effects of the utility of the study that, that system can be upgraded. It'll be like, pretty much like any other electrical connection.
As far as probably, Philip, it's probably fine, but I just have a question there. I, as a hobby, report using a very extra voice as well, so that we didn't get that on, on that at all. Okay.
We're too finished. What I gotta say in the hall?
State law, I have a couple of questions. For one, what kind of zoning are you talking about changing this?
It's going to remain residential. Residential.
It's already residential.
It's going, it's going to remain residential.
So what's the change? I thought it was a zoning change.
It's not, it's not a zoning change. The bylaws allow it to be placed in residential areas.
My follow-up question for that was, what, what is this going to do as far as the owner's taxes go? Is it going to change it or is he going to just pay tax by municipal air?
Okay, and that came up earlier. We can't speak to that yet because that's something that the town will decide, you know, obviously with the, with the assessors and what, what is in best interest for the town, I imagine that's what they're going to try to do.
And as far as the noise of these things puts on, what does that do to the animals? I happen to like all the animals around, I like theirs. You know? But they're all going to get chased away because this thing goes in. We all lose.
I, I can't.
I, I haven't seen any evidence presented to us that, that noise levels that, that are involved with these kind of systems have like an effect on, on animals in the area. I can try and do some research about it, but nothing to that can attest and confirm to us from any, any side. In all of the public hearings that we've had around the state and around other states, it's never been shown that there lives that kind of effect on the wildlife.
Maybe you're going to take a 30-acre spot away and let the animals run and kind of chase them all out of there and you don't need the fence three feet off the ground which allows anybody who went there wants to anyways. Do you know what you said? Did it work?
No, the modules are working even off the ground. There's a six-inch gaff under the fence, just for smaller.
So we're going to have a bear problem under the six-inch gaff?
I don't think we're anticipating having bears.
Yeah, you're right.
I know they're, they're pretty inventive, so I guess they probably could, they'd find a way, but we have, we haven't had that occur on any websites. I do understand that it's an area that's, that is forested now, it's going to be cleared and it will be fenced in so that a lot of the larger wildlife won't have access to that area. But I think that's probably an issue to address our public hearing with the conservation officials.
Philip?
Just wanted to go back to what I was talking about earlier. How the zo, how the bylaws read now, they can have a 1.2 megawatt? No?
No, it's up to 250. 250 megawatts, they can have without, please, you guys are sorry.
Kill a lot.
Kill a lot, sorry, kill a lot.
So that's, so what I'm trying to get to, that's a lot smaller scale than what they're doing. Do you guys have a plan B where you could fall within what is allowed and move on with your project?
That's, that's only the threshold for not even having to come to this board. That would, we would just be applying to our building permits if that was the case. The reason that, that the bylaws are set up the way they are is to afford you the opportunity to come in and raise your concerns with us, create a concern with the planning board, so that they can consider all those issues, they can place conditions on our approval for extra measures that we have to have to protect the, the safety and welfare of the public, make sure that we're not having a visual impact or a noise impact or any other kind of impact on our neighbors or what, all of the kinds of things that we're raised here today. So that's what this process is about, is about pointing out what your concerns are. We'll provide our plans to the best that we can to address your concerns and make sure that that's not a problem for you. We want to be a good neighbor too.
I was trying to educate myself on solar ahead of the meetings, I couldn't understand what's going on. What I read was you need about five acres for one megawatt?
That's possible.
So, so with that, you're cramming the maximum amount you can, like you're using every ounce of those 30 acres. You could be a little smaller and still leave some buffer and not stretch it out all the way.
That, that's all part of this process. We, we size the system based on what we think the, the project site can accommodate. The larger system is obviously is more economically feasible for us. The smaller it gets with, with large means for upgrades to the distribution system, that's kind of a fixed cost that doesn't go away, so the larger system can help balance that out so that it's still profitable.
And have you done one with size in our systems?
We are permittinging a number, I'm not sure if we've built one that's, that's six acres or six megawatts. We probably have built some that are in this range. The incentive program in Massachusetts used to require a maximum size of 2.8 megawatts, but they allowed you to stack projects. So there are some sites that have several projects that we, that would add to that site. We have sites in Clinton, Hartwick, Berry, we're permitting some in Beltratown, Palmer. Yeah, I mean, we can provide a list of where our projects are and even down to the ones that are closest to, to Granby, so that you could go and see what, what an instructional system looks like. We can provide that information.
Because I, I've looked around at, at the other areas where there are some, and I haven't seen many that are that big. And I went to the beginning of the meeting, we said that there's data that shows that the property value of your house went down. Well, if the payments weren't there, you would get more. I don't think anybody's going to... I, I think it's a data source.
Yeah, I know that that seems like a logical conclusion. I mean, we, we're kind of biased, we, we think we're a good neighbor because we don't use town resources, we don't consume water, we don't produce sewer, we're producing renewable energy and putting it into the distribution system. We use very little of the town's resources in the way of, you know, electric generation or anything that would really be impactful to the region itself. So as I said, we're biased, we, we think we're a good neighbor, we want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to have a negative impact on, on our neighbors, so.
My last question, Charles, my last question. Is there any possible way that we could directly benefit without going through the grid from having this on back end? Is any other, any other sites that you've ever done, I'm sure it's a question that was thrown out there, has anybody had those combinations, gotten power off your grid, off your hands?
Not, not for a residential user like that, individual residential user. We do have institutional, like, community colleges and whatnot that are direct offakers for systems that are built, but in general, it's, it just doesn't work out from a construction standpoint and electrical standpoint to provide direct renewable energy to any of the surrounding residences. It would all have to be through the, the community energy project. And so the, those discount rates would be available in lieu of a direct connection or placing modules on your roof or your backyard, that type of thing. A lot of people don't want to have them on the roof, they don't want to have them in the backyard, they would feel like that's it from the renewable one, you do it. So if there's a way to provide that, we would, with a, with a, with a, thank you.
I love that this is a genuine question, so there's a call for that. So let's say the solar goes in, is there like, I want to say a probationary period of some type where if we do start to see changes that are negatively affecting, whether it be our water, animals, things in our basement, whatever, that we'll have a means of bringing those forward to someone, somewhere to kind of go through a process to rectify that and we'll be responsible for jumping through hoops to, to basically confirm that it was due to this solar field being established, you know, that was a result of whatever we're experiencing, would that be a process in place?
Well, it wouldn't be a direct process from us. We will have to comply with code enforcement, so if we're creating a nuisance to many of our neighbors, the town's code enforcement would step in.
We, we typically put conditions, conditions on the, on the permit.
And if, if there's already visual concerns through this process, we can, you know, we can work with you if, if you think there's a specific visual concern to make sure that we provide something that, that's to your liking in the way of screening, you'll have it available or there's the possibility of doing our stormwater out there so you can see how that created those runoff calculation repairs. There's still a lot in the works to come.
Speaking of which, you're, we talked about what, what you're going to bring back to us now?
Sure.
I'd like to see some details on, well, I want to see the topography.
Right.
That you owe us. I'd like to see some examples of the anchors that you're going to be using.
Okay.
And then, of course, the, the design for the stormwater control. The earlier we get that, the earlier we can, we can kick it out to us.
We should add that in next speaker.
We're going to need that information before, I think, before we want to circulate it to peer review or any of the department heads.
Yes.
I think we should have that.
So we're, so we're sending out one package.
Even before we send it off to the primary level, the planning commission, which helps the town of Granby in our planning process.
We will, we'll be committing to our national certification commission, and that's all part of that factor. We'll, we'll, even if that's ahead of the other information, we'll provide that.
How long do you think it'll take to have the rest of it, the full package?
I don't imagine it's going to be a lot longer than that, depending on what, what those authorities. We're expecting the trowel to be on the site back this week, so we should have that at any day. That's what's holding up this one part of the time, so that will start right away when we get that, which brought to examples of the ground screws. And maybe if the, there might be one around the office that I could even bring in, but I believe I'll, I'll have photos of what they look like.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see some technical.
They are, they're recorded in a sort of systematic way on our detail sheet. There's a cross-section of what the, the system looks like. Yeah, so that's the, so that's what the ground screw looks like. And there are a little green.
Is that public information?
This is all available right now, yes, and no one has ever.
The other, the other thing, maybe provide us with some sort of sound screening, some examples of something you could put around those.
Do you have an area?
I'd like to know if it's agricultural.
Yeah.
So who deals that?
We will, we will, we'll follow up on that. And due to some of the concerns about the, the wetland, the way you've got that there.
You've got it inside.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe if you, we can, we can bring this inside.
Might not be a bad idea. I mean, I think it was a valid concern from whoever was over here on this side, it said, you know, for water habitat. That's what we're discussing, yes, Charles. That's what we're discussing, yes, Charles.
We'll revise it so that we have on the area outside.
So, the animals can still get in?
It looks like we do also possibly just what consider if this is actually open area is on, so we're happy with that.
And I didn't see a...
Is your, because you're talking about the wetlands, you had it surveyed, is that in your open records? So, we can see what was the conservation of your, it was no vertical.
I don't believe we submitted the donation report, but it will be part of our content. And I can provide that.
The notice every tenth will go to the conservation, Grandly Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like this construction control packet, where you're going to lay out self-fencing, ground control.
That's on our building control plan, but the tool we're using that...
So, we're going to want to see that, we're going to want to know the process and schedule for each step. Where, a sequencing, we're going to want to see where you're going to store. We're going to want to see a track mat at the bottom of the driveway.
Okay, you mean like a construction...
Yeah. All the, all the typical stuff, we're going to want to see it in writing so that when we prove the conditions that we think are there.
It is on the plan, we'll just make sure that it's, like, it's not completely obvious. You know, to provide a 20-foot description of the incomes that's there, heard of the equipment tires before they, I don't know.
You have a final, you have, you have a preliminary review from National Grid in the package. Will you have a final one before you make a decision?
When is the study? The study, we're going to be wrapping up in the next four to six weeks on this project.
I'm just concerned that there's just a little bit left on the substation, but we need to, for granting to you, say the resident, but you're going to take up all that plus add on just enough to increase it to what you need, then what happens to everybody else?
So, the utility company has already provided us with an initial screen that identifies capacity upon the substation. An issue with the interconnection here with the actual overhead wires on Kendall Street, they need it re-conducted. And so, that means we're going to be upgrading that line on Kendall Street to be able to take the solar power from this. And so, you have a sense for what goes up with this project.
Will that, will that mean a bigger line? How do you do that?
I think it's a different line, I don't want to shoot off my head and say that.
I think it means a bigger conductor, but I don't know if it's a size difference that that large, but it's a bigger copper conductor, so.
So, you'll have that final verdict from National Grid before we can make our decision?
It should be received of the completed system in the past, in the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
If I may, didn't you just say you're going to receive the study in four to six weeks? And how are you going to have something for us in a couple of weeks?
Well, the study, we're going to receive the fast study, which will be in unsigned final app. We can present and show for the larger scale of the draft study, or we may not have needed signs of the aspect of agreement within a couple of weeks, like before you people come out of this, depending on the mercy of the board.
And will I have the final?
Was someone... I have a couple of things. I can't believe that a solar company, company can come in and not know what is required of the street size. I mean, it's going to be three page right now, there's one wire that runs on the top of the poles, two crossarms and three wires don't. The size isn't going to be anything, it's really not going to affect anybody. But everybody's concern here is that it's so close to their backyards. There's 30-something other acres there, but if it was pushed back another 100 or 200 feet away from everybody's house, doesn't seem like we'd be having this conversation much. Is there any reason we couldn't locate further in the woods, which would get a lot runoff away from the houses?
Well, it's not just particular, it's like layout, I'm reducing out pretty much the area that we were from the residence, I see the maximum that we can.
All the land and the string there, that is all part of the acres.
No, our property ends at this pink line. That continues forested area, but it's upside, it's upside, it's not in the property. That's, that's our boundary, it's like, like the use docks is the boundary of the process.
Okay, so if that's all part of the park, what's the rest of the people in town outside? Because it's going to affect them, everybody walks, their dogs, rice, their horses, everything else.
Well, that's why we're having the meeting.
Okay.
There's a simple question of, as this process moves forward, how can we stay informed with any proposals, submittals, decisions made by the board or the town? Because I'd like to stay informed as to what decisions the town makes, what they approve, what they don't. Is it going to be readily available on the website? I can't be, work, I work in Connecticut, I can't get up here when the town offices are open?
So, on the town website, anytime there's a meeting, the meeting's posted, you can always find out what the agenda is. So, you can actually find out if they're on the agenda, whether it's for us, whether it's for conservation. If there's going to be a public hearing in regards to conservation, because you are abutters, you would be notified, just as you're notified here for this meeting.
But is that the only time?
I don't believe that to be true.
Why?
The abutters have been notified for this meeting. We will just merely, I assume, continue the meeting.
We'll pick the date tonight before we do that.
And the abutters, however, the abutters will not be notified the way...
Not while I'm talking about the conservation committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if another board has to meet regarding this, you would be notified as an abutters. Our meeting would continue, but to say, you know, the date that we give for this meeting would be continued at that date. But what I'm also saying that, on the website, the agendas for each particular meeting, they could be on it.
But are the meetings in all places, decisions will be made?
Yes.
Or are decisions going to be made, approvals given outside of meetings?
Decisions are made at open meetings. Okay, so...
I want to make sure that I can stay informed with the whole process after this.
Any, any decisions being made is being made at open meetings.
And we, so it's not us applying the meeting on the website, we won't be notified that that's going to happen?
That is correct, and that's, I mean, that's no difference for myself as president. I want to find out something.
The first town meeting I've had to, I used to have a basic...
And I say that because as myself, if I wanted to find out what's being brought up at a different meeting, I find out it's under agenda, see if I'm interested in what they've been talking about. Hey, folks, I just ask that we do keep it down because we are still on the public hearing, we're trying to listen to everybody's comments. We have sidebar comments or conversations, it's hard to hear everybody else. Is there any other questions from the public at this time?
I have a question, I'm on the table there at the 9th Kendall Street. What happens if, for some unforeseen reason, something happens at the solar farm? Will that, if it sends like over transmits or anything, does that affect all of our electricity? Will it shut us down on Kendall Street? Could it possibly over, as you said before, we've been overloaded, like I'm on this year already, I've lost TVs, had to call insurance, like, it's ridiculous. Now, to bring in an extra need to upgrade just that particular part of the system, how is that going to affect the rest of the distributed out into us? And when it shuts down, do we shut down? Like, because we're all connected.
That's what the utilities studies are for. That's also why we have this whole series of poles produced up near the roadway. Each one of these poles is going to have any equipment mounted on it. There are disconnect switches that would automatically disconnect in that kind of a situation. There's also internal disconnects at the system itself, so there's, there's more than one level of protection against that. And all the ins and outs of all of the equipment that gets, that gets mounted out there, if there are questions of that nature, I can bring one of our electrical engineers along to answer those questions. But that's all part of the utilities consideration when they approve our system, is that there are protections built in to prevent that from being mentioned.
Should I piggyback off that?
Just give me one second, and she's going to have my hand up there for one sec.
Yeah, I'd like to be aware that the wetlands up there are not the only ones that would be affected. We live directly across from the area where it can't be built because it's solely a ledge across the street from us. There is already runoff that goes under the road, and the town built a runoff that goes down the side of our property, which has never been tamed, so it's all overgrown with trees and all kinds of things at this point. It runs heavily in the spring. If there's additional, not to mention that our well sits right there too, if there's additional water, it piles up behind us, which is a designated wetland. That would begin to overflow, the broth runs through our property, it's between Kendall Street and where Cox Farm is, which is directly behind us. And if that starts to back up, it backs up into the property across that line away from us as well. And that poor guy is sometimes out there digging, it's cleaning it up because he's watering it up so high. So, what it's saying is, if there's additional runoff and it comes through, they're going to create an entire swamp in the area that now is part of the year, just a wet year.
The only answer I can give to that is that we have to prove to your conservation commission, to your planning board, to the state D E P, that we're not going to create that.
You should also be aware that in Grandly, we both have set systems, and we really don't want those to run over.
Right. That's why we have to prove that we don't increase those runoff levels. So, if we have...
Unfortunately, the only way to prove it is when it happens.
Well, if we try to propose a system that Adam had in mind, he would get approval from the local report from the state. So, we would not have a project if we proposed something like that.
Is there any other questions from the public at this time?
Over there again, Kendall Street, is there going to be any battery capacity at this farm? So, when your inverters get the DC voltage, will they store DC there before they convert the AC out to the grid?
There is an energy storage system proposed with this, all the parameters for that are on the copy sheet of our drawings. It's a 6.6 megawatt.
The cell composition will be in there?
If, if we didn't provide it yet, I can certainly provide all the data sheets from that. There are lithium ion batteries, they're built with individual cells, so each cell is contained, then each module of cells is contained, that's all in a containment around the entire system. And then, it's in a UL listed enclosure. It has a fire suppression system, it has sophisticated monitoring equipment, it's temperature controlled, keep the batteries at an adequate operating temperature. So, there are backup systems to that, I can provide all that information to the board. If the, if the town board hasn't seen that yet, they're going to start seeing it more often because it does provide for storage of the energy that's produced during the high producing times of the day, which are not necessarily the high use times. So, the additional energy that's produced and can't be distributed is stored in the battery system, and then that's distributed in heating and people are coming home from work and when the use time is higher. So, it, it levels out the production of the energy for the system.
Okay, so there will be a triple back into the grid relative to usage and consumption?
It...
No, when I say triple back, I'm talking when there's demand into the feeder system of the street. So, National Grid will have to offset production, so they won't have to produce anywhere the usual programs?
Well, I'm not sure how that, how that all works, but it's all metered, it's got a very sophisticated control system that, so the distribution would be based on time of use and demand levels that are pretty well established in the services. So, I can bring some energy storage people with us next time too, that can answer in a little more detail than that. I'm the site development guy, so they have more expertise in that. And it's a very new technology, so I have to rely on them for really, really detailed answers to some questions.
For the minutes, can you call back what you're going to provide us?
Sure. We are going to provide topography, some examples of the ground screws that support our vacuum, our stormwater design, you said sound dampening examples. We're going to revise our plan to fence out that wetland area that's currently fenced in. We'll provide our weapon reports, construction control, sequencing, lay down, and whatever final information we get from the utility in the way of a system impact study, we'll provide as much as available to us.
In the documents, I didn't, is there a cost for decommissioning? Have you provided that?
It should be in there.
Yep.
I will, I can revisit it based on any comments that you have.
It's not in there, it should be in the package that was in there.
I believe the last time we did that, we sent that out for peer review as well.
That, that you should have started.
Yeah, it's in the, in the information, Kathy said.
Can you bring me an AC report? I don't hear that energy signal.
The weapons reports, yes, we've told people. Well, come back.
Certainly, sorry. The battery banks, you said before, when there's no power going on, when the sun goes down, you know, power's going out, when the sun goes down, those battery banks are making noise?
The battery banks themselves, the HVAC, the equipment.
The cooling system and the fire protection.
There's just the indoor air conditioning system that would be similar to what you have at the rest.
In my, in my notification for the meeting, they didn't talk anything about that. Those, those battery storing systems are scared. They just installed one on the 10-acre farm down by the river in Holyoke. And they, and it was already established, it was in a commercial, there was no residents around, it's tucked alongside the river, but those banks, you don't do anything, you just let them burn, you just, because there's, there's toxic stuff in there.
Right, well, these, these are...
I hope the fire burns right from that thing, it scares me.
These are in a UL rated, and there's a capable fire suppression system, it's a power that will distinguish the fire. So, I mean, the data sheets outline what other fire protection measures are required for those. So, if we haven't provided those, we definitely provide those in the future. But, yeah, it's a fairly new technology, but it's going to be widely used.
It's just not, there's no history, you know, there's no track there, it's scary because it's unknown.
Well, I'll bring my energy storage guys along so that they can provide a better inventory at, at the...
Now, you were just saying about the, the exposure or whatever, the technical side come on or hazards, how does that affect your water? For our wells, it's not...
It's same, it's same. And each module is encapsulated, and then instead of modules encapsulated, it has three levels of containment, like the air systems themselves, and then the structure that the whole thing is contained. So, there are four levels of protection against that.
Is there any other questions from the public? At this time, I'd do as our board, thank everybody for coming out here. Any questions, your thoughts, your opinions, your suggestions? Again, we take great concern to everything that's brought up here. By all means, I don't want you to think your voices are not going to be heard.
Oh, we probably will.
At this point, would we have a close?
Before, we're not going to close. What we're going to do is, how long is it going to take you to provide us with all this information? Before we continue, I want a date that we can...
I would say within two weeks.
So, our, our next meeting date's the 13th, Louise?
August 13th.
So, I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing.
Can we discuss the date first?
Sure.
Susan, our Pioneer Valley Planing Commission rep, is not available. Susan, our Pioneer Valley Plan Intermission rep, is not available, I believe, that evening?
She's not available, 13. She's at a conference.
So maybe we'd like to make it the 27th of August, possibly.
That must give you time to get everything.
Will that work for you?
And if you let us know what a piece of a period you are, we can provide that check anytime, so you can get that rolling. So if you have an idea of what kind of deposit you want now, we can request that check and we get back and provide it right away. Or if you had a specific proposal, I understand that those are just in a deposit account and then you draw from that. So if you have an idea of a ballpark, we can go ahead and provide that. So there's a deposit of money to cover those period.
And we don't have that out. It's something else to discuss.
We can, you can take a look at it, as long as it's fairly reasonable.
Didn't we do something like $10,000 on the last solar for?
Yeah, but that, I don't know if that had anything to do with storing water.
It's a starting point.
It's gonna go into an escrow account.
Right.
It would be refundable and if-
And if depleted.
And if depleted.
Are you saying, are you saying $10,000 or are you?
I'm just not sure the paperwork that's involved with the, it's a Steve Nally question.
Steve Nally, yeah, he's already talked to us about it. We'll settle that, the process for him. He'll put it in a separate account, track it.
But we just don't know a dollar.
And we could start off with the amount of $10,000 with the understanding that if it does exceed that, then obviously we notify you.
That's, that's fine. It's, it'll be enough to get into your number started very soon. A lot of times, it doesn't, it doesn't accumulate to that much depending on the level of, of your. So I think that that would be very well covered in the board. So it seems, it seems sufficient.
Reasonable. So $10,000.
And that's payable to the town.
Yes.
Okay, so back to the meeting.
Should that, should that, sorry, should that come to the town or is it?
Actually, the town.
Same, when you file for the application?
Town club.
Will anybody from this board want to make a site visit before the next meeting?
I don't know if I want to do a site visit before the next meeting, but I may want to do one after we see the totals.
I'd like to see the topography and everything else first. So now are we back to scheduling?
Yep.
Twenty six?
It'd be the 27th.
27th of August? 6 o'clock. I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until August 28th.
7th.
I'll try to push it back a day, try to put that.
Okay, so your motion is continue the hearing to August 27th at 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, here.
Here.
Carnegie Hall.
I will second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
We're not closing anything. We will now reconvene.
Okay.
And make, I made a motion to reconvene and open the regular extension.
Meeting, meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Just what I was talking about before, wasn't closing the meeting, was closing the public input.
No, we still can't do that.
You can't close the public input at that point?
Once you close the public input, there can never be anything more for the public to say. That's what we're discussing ourselves. Am I correct?
So it was to reconvene the planning board ready to meet.
Yeah. So at that point then, they could continue to keep on asking questions till we continue it?
That is correct. Or until the chair decided that enough was enough for this evening, if that's where you're going.
That's what I was asking, yes. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Can I leave a Grammy motel?
Grammy motel?
You're next.
Nope, it's everybody behind you.
I thought this is gonna be, I wasn't part of it. Sorry.
Well, no, please leave your name, leave your name on.
Leave it in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's a general sign in for the, for the meeting.
That's just, that was just, that's for anybody that's at a meeting that, that wants to speak.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you just speak a little bit louder, please? I'm having difficulty with the-
Yeah, we are rebuilding the fire building. Last year, we are planning what up, and so we are building the second one. So we are ready to rebuild that building now. So just here, show us what we can do.
They called earlier, a week or so ago. I told them, come in, provide us with what your intentions are and then we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
They've got some plans, but I don't know what, I don't know if they've got site plans or routine anything to, I don't know. So this, this footprint is existing?
Yes.
This parking is existing?
Yes.
So you're rebuilding where the fire was?
Yes, and that's-
Same building.
The same footprint?
Same footprint?
Four unit suite, but now we're making seven instead of kitchen.
We're not, that was like two middle room with a hall apartment with a bedroom, kitchen, and living room. So we are not gonna do that. We're gonna cut it half. We just have only a regular matel room with only bed and bathroom.
Yeah, okay.
So instead of, there's only four now, we're gonna put seven. We're trying. We can do seven.
Okay. I mean, how's that, that's the same footprint, really.
I'm trying to think if it's gonna trigger anything, if they've got sufficient parking. What's that?
Change of use.
How so?
Max utilizing or creating more units. I don't know if that is a trigger. Have you been to the building inspector yet at all?
Yes.
And what were his thoughts?
Pardon me?
What were the, what was the building inspector's thoughts? Did he issue a permit?
No, they said we are in the process of getting the permit. We just assigned a builder and everything. Hired a builder. They're gonna go to the, get a permit and we've been working on this quite a bit. Now, our building inspector says, you know, just go to the board meeting first, you know, propose your plan and then move from there.
So there's gonna be, instead of four units, there's now gonna be seven smaller units?
Smaller units.
And this is the current parking?
Yes. There was a four parking, four or five, six parking, but now if we are making seven units, we will have enough room for the seven parking.
So is this already paved?
No. No.
It's not.
So where, I'm gonna ask you, where did, so when you have the four rooms here, where do these people park? Right there?
Right there.
It just wasn't paved? It just wasn't paved?
Yeah, we have planned to make, but we have all the lounge space, this empty space there.
But prior to the fire, those, that's where people parked, they were using those rooms?
In front of the rooms.
And you've got, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six here, and you've got one, two, three, four?
No, but this is not, this is not, this is a future.
That doesn't exist.
But I'm just saying, some of these spaces here are for here, right?
That doesn't exist. These don't exist yet.
This doesn't exist yet. There's no buildings yet. This is, this is a land.
Right.
This is a land. In future, we might want to rebuild and increase this water, that under two buildings, but it's in the future.
Okay, so you're not, you're not using anything here?
No, no. This is only this building.
So it'll only be that little bit there?
Yes.
But that other building's standing, yeah, right?
What other building?
The one that caught fire?
The one that caught fire is still there?
It's standing.
No, but that one, but the, almost I'm in the wrong spot here.
This is the main building?
Yeah.
The fire building is right here.
Yeah, this is what.
Yeah, so the, so the main building?
The main building is-
Right there.
Yes, it's the building.
Okay, I'm looking at it the wrong side up.
1-2-0-2 is what Jim-
Yeah, she's looking at the other side.
The main building and a side, left and right is a-
There was a four unit building, right, because you had a fire.
Okay. I was looking at it from this end. That's why, I was very confused.
Well, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but in order for us, in order for me to sign off on the plan or not wanna, this cannot be shown. I'm not gonna have somebody come back to us later and say, you approved the plan.
That's very true.
Right, yes, yep.
Without that permit?
Yeah.
I agree, Jim, because it's on there.
It bites us every time.
No parking is shown there.
Yeah, that's, doesn't show the parking.
That was we had hired somebody for us if we wanna do a job.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So more or less, we're looking for something like this plan without that, those, you know, future buildings, shouldn't you?
And I think it's, it all goes to building code. There's no, there's no impervious, it's all gravel driveway, so we're not concerned about runoff. There's ample parking for, I mean, you could have had that many people parking there if it was just the four units.
Right.
It's a last room, that's a last room.
And the building department.
Could possibly fire.
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll have to have a statement.
But the, but it's not gonna be blocked up until you're finished all of it?
Which one? What do you mean?
It won't be blocked up back here?
No.
Nick, here is nothing there, Nick.
This is a, this is all driveway. It's, you can, it's far, it's, it's parking, there is enough room to, you know.
It's, I think it's pretty much all on the building department. He's gonna have, I mean, as far as site, site plan goes, they're gonna have to have handicap access. That's all gonna be driven by building code.
Yes, yes, that's what we're gonna do. First unit or last unit. There was two units, first and last, that's gonna be a handicap access.
I mean, the use is the same.
The use is the same. They've just added a couple, three more units.
Expanded use.
This building is already that excess. It's a grandfather land, so, you know.
And we're making new, new foundations.
Yeah, you're gonna have to do all that. It's all building code. We're concerned with site plan.
I don't see anything different. Except for, like you said, Jim, as far as have another plan that doesn't have the future buildings in it.
Yeah, exactly. You're just replacing what's there.
Yeah.
Right.
Whatever goes on inside there, as long as there's ample parking.
It's up in that area.
I, I do have a question. Why, why are you folks, as the owner presenting this and not your engineer, Huntley?
Why is not, or is not?
Yeah, why is Huntley Associates not here?
Oh, because, you know, we had hired him, when I, we talked to him from beginning, when the building had a fire, we hired him to do the plan, okay, but then we decided, he wanted to give me this whole plan with this buildings and I thought we, we decided not to do this building after. So we, we have another builder that we assigned to build this building. He's gonna have his, our own architect to do only this building. You're gonna have another plan with only this building.
Okay, so you add Huntley doing a potential layout of future expansion, I understand.
So they just need to come back with a new and improved, without this. So we can sign off?
Oh, you can get that.
Yeah, because they're not, they're not signing, they're not signing off on it? There's nothing for us to sign off?
No, we don't have to sign off on it.
That's not an A and R though?
No. No. Probably there, they're just rebuilding.
I can't think of anything that would.
An A and R would only be if they're changing the use.
No, it would be that. A and R's only for when they're dividing property.
So they don't need to come back in?
It's just a building inspector.
You know, I'm gonna read. Who's designing the building?
That's me.
He's the-
The architect?
The architect that is, is in from Northampton.
Are we, do we wanna see access, how they're gonna access the building? Like the ramps, make sure that there's sufficient, that's part of the site plan.
Make sure their ADA.
We don't have to have a hearing or anything like that. We're gonna sign off on it or send a letter, the approval of some sort. They're gonna need it from us.
They're gonna, they're gonna need a full set of, correct, a full set of plans regardless, whether it's for us or for building, fire, or anything else.
But anything there for us is signed off.
I'm sorry?
Because anything for us is signed off.
We can send a letter stating that it's pre-existing.
And we can have, bring back new plans, we can review them, just to say that we did take a look at them and-
It doesn't require, yeah, it doesn't require a hearing.
Right, that we did look at, we don't see any concerns moving forward.
Or just simple enough, send it off to P V P C.
This is like the beginning. We have, this is the bedroom. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven rooms.
So this one is handicap accessible?
Yes.
Okay. So here's the door.
Handicap, I think it's this one.
It's this one, yeah.
This is door bigger?
He just showed me like if you make two beds, how they looks.
I don't care about the inside, I just wanna know how they're gonna access it.
In front.
I know, but where's the ramp?
That's why, you know, we decided to do this one so that you can have a ramp out here.
It's gonna come out this way, not here. I guess it's got more to do with building code than it does.
I think so. It's kind of welcome to play when they look at it as well as the handicap access and-
The roof pitches seem to meet. Of course, it's, they're replacing existing, so even if they-
I would tend to agree that it's more building inspector, most building inspector related.
What is it?
If there's conservation issues or, you know, during the construction, that kind of stuff.
So the building inspector would be willing to figure that out?
Well, the building permit's gonna have to be signed off by every planning board and I-
Conservation, fire, police.
Just like anything else.
Yeah, right.
So I guess what we're saying is, we don't need anything. We're gonna have to sign off the building. Your contractor will have-
I'd say it's the same footprint, is it?
Yeah, we're not expanding.
It's actually going to be updated, it's going to?
We just have to have a, a new foundation, we need a new foundation, that's what we're going to do, but, you know, we want to make sure that.
It's outstanding.
The foundation is out, I don't want the town to tell me that, you cannot plan that.
No, but the, the foundation is, is the same foundation you have there now, so it's not getting wider, it's not getting longer.
No, no, same size, but new, we don't need the foundation.
Yeah, there's other committees, commissions, that'll fall in, board of health, that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would have something in writing?
No.
No, the building, uh, your, your contractor.
Oh, he's going to come up and have, yeah.
There's a place on the permit for us to sign on.
Okay, thank you.
Take care, have a good night.
Yes.
So this is all part of those plans, should I take anything with it?
Um, okay, so you want to go back to that form?
You want to review it tonight, or you want to push it off table to our next meeting?
It's up to you guys.
What time is it?
Eight thirty-seven.
What else is on our agenda for this evening, anything else? That's it?
Um, I don't know if you, let's see what I have here. No, no, as far as I know, no, um, no applications have come in for recording secretary, didn't hear anything about the planning board seat, did you?
Nothing as of yet, I'm waiting to hear back from the two people.
Just a note, I did see the advertisement, I believe it was, it was either the sentinel or the reminder for a recording secretary.
Did it have a pay rate or anything in it, or just said inquire?
Yeah, I think we.
No, I don't think there was.
No.
We talked about one, but.
Commensurate, I said commensurate, or however you say it, on experience, it depends on their experience.
Based on experience and, kind of a to be discussed.
Yeah. And you were going to check with the principal or somebody?
Yeah, but they're not in schools, not in session right now, so I don't know if he's actually seeing his emails.
Oh.
I don't know, but I was also, I, I, I don't want to give up a name, but a few people, college students have actually talked to me about it, had mentioned it to some people, see if anybody's interested in it, and a couple people have said they might be interested in it, so.
Recording secretary?
Yes.
Mike is a good start?
Yes.
So, okay, so, the only thing left then is, that form, if you still want to do, because you postponed it till later.
Table it, table it, table it.
Table it?
No, I said we tabled it till later, which is AKA postpone.
What, what, nothing's changed on that, correct?
No, we looked at it at the last meeting, everybody decided on changes, and I just put the changes in there.
Changes, right.
But we need to vote to say, yes, we approve it, so I can get Kathy to post it on there, so people start using this.
Do we require, when an A and R is done, that we get a flash drive of an A and R?
I don't think you get a one of an A and R.
No, I think it's.
The A and R is.
Okay, okay, okay.